Always a pleasure to see everybody. Thank you so much for coming. We'll call this meeting to order. Russell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Fisk Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here. Stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item on the agenda is public comment. So if you'll read for the record, please, Russell, those rules. And then, anybody wishing to make a public comment, now is the time to fill out the form real quick and turn it in to Russell.
All speakers are limited to three minutes. A public comment will last for the first thirty minutes of the meeting. All comments must be on non-agenda items. All speakers, as the mayor said, must fill out a request card prior to speaking. All speakers must state their first name, last name, and mailing address. Speakers will be called in the order in which the request cards were received. And the request cards will only be received until the first five minutes. And we're ready to go, Mayor.
Mayor, we have four public speakers tonight. Is there anyone else before we start? Four public speakers tonight in this order. Oscar Ganem, Willie Jones, Nancy Cook, and Newell Hollingsworth. Mr. Ganem?
Thank you. My name is Oscar Ganem. I live in Weston, and I'm running for the position on District 104. But before I tell you the reason why I'm here, I want to say hi to the authorities here, starting by the mayor, vice mayor, city councils, town attorney, town clerk, and of course, the administrator here, that is the boss. It's for me a pleasure to be here, sir. I'm an immigrant. I'm a citizen. And I'm proud to say that I live in the best country in the world. I'm from Venezuela, and I lost my country because of communism. And the reason why I'm here is because I'm fighting against the communism to be inside America. And that's the main reason why I want to become your voice in Southwest Ranches. There's going to be an election on November, and my name is going to be on the ballot. I'm going to be running on election on the District 104 for the state rep. And I know there is a great guy, there is a good guy, that is running again. But I just want to present myself. I want to meet with Vice Mayor, who gave me the opportunity to be here, and to say that I am here with the Weston Republican Clubs, that we are living in close cities, but we don't know each other. So Doug, thank you for letting me be here and try to connect with Nancy Cook, that is the Weston Republican Club president and the team here, to see if we can work out some issues in reference to the better of Southwest Ranches and the safety also for Southwest Ranches and the safetiness for Weston. I want to be your voice. If you let me be your voice, you know that I'm going to be doing as much as I can to protect America against communism. Thank you so much for letting me be here. Very kind.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Good evening. I'd like to say thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. Again, my name is Willie Jones. I'm a candidate, like the first speaker, but I'm a candidate for Sheriff of Broward County. And the reason I'm running for Sheriff of Broward County, first, because it's the right thing to do. I care about what's going on in Broward County. And I have the record. I've worked thirty-nine point nine years in law enforcement. I have a master's with the human resource management specialty. In those thirty-nine point nine years, I have no discipline written or otherwise. I believe in community policing, community partnerships. I believe that in order for Broward County to become the best county in the world, we need partnerships throughout at all levels. In law enforcement, because trust has become the word instead of protect and serve, we need to redevelop trust. We need to develop trust with everybody in our county. That's including officials and most especially, citizens. I believed in the twentieth century, the reason that we lost that trust is because police departments, law enforcement, is a single-source sole provider. We can treat the public the way we want, and we have. But in the twenty-first century, we have to abandon that. We have to do what fire departments have done. They deliver quality to the people that they serve, and they remember the people that they serve. As your sheriff, I will remember that. I was talking with the assistant chief in the back. The only people that think about jurisdictions are us, law-abiding people. All of our criminals have little or no respect for jurisdiction. They'll cross the line at any time to commit a crime. The current sheriff is bragging, and he's talking about he has a double-digit reduction in crime rates. That sounds good, unless you're that one person that has their house burglarized, you got robbed. Now, it's a hundred percent. We need to get away from the twentieth-century way of policing, validating our success through how many calls for service we handle, how many tickets we handle, how many arrests we make. We need to do the partnerships that we need to protect our youth, because I'm sixty-one. The children, the millennials, they're going to run this country for the next forty years. And the policing that we did in the twentieth century, I can guarantee you, will not work for our kids. They are totally different. August thirtieth, I'm running a primary. Remember Willie Jones, Broward County Sheriff. Thank you.
Nancy Cook. And then, final speaker is Newell Hollingsworth.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Nancy Cook. My address, 16640 Greens Edge in Weston. And I'm here to support Oscar Ganem for Florida Rep. And I'm also here to invite you to our Weston meetings. We're so close, and I'd like to invite you to come. We have meetings the first Tuesday of every month in Wang's in Weston Restaurant, which is near our only movie theater. Perhaps you know where that is. So this next meeting will be June seventh, and we're having Joyce Kaufman, the radio talk show host and political pundit. It's going to be a really good meeting. I'd love to have you all come. Thank you.
Newell Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Good evening. I'm not running for anything. I'm just going to talk about something that took place last evening. Two AM, I was up, and I was sitting outside on the back deck. And all of a sudden, seemed like the entire world's motorcycles were coming down Griffin Road. Well, it turns out that two o'clock, the bar closes out at the truck stop. So we had, let's say, individuals who were a little bit happy, riding their motorcycles and revving them and squealing and doing donuts and everything else in the highway, with large amounts, I'd say that there was at least a hundred motorcycles. There was probably more, considering the number I've seen parked out there at times. And then after, they all went through at a high rate of fuel consumption. Then we had the cars coming through, revving their engines and everything else. And this has been getting worse and worse over time. So I think that we need to do something about it to ensure that they drive at forty-five miles an hour in the lane and not as a mass. And I'd like for the council to take a look at it and see what they can do. Thank you.
I think that concludes public comment, Keith.
Yep.
Okay, that concludes public comment, item number three. Item number four, board reports. And members of the board want to update us on anything?
Newell Hollingsworth, I should have just stayed up here, Chair of the Conferency Plan. I'd like to let you know at our meeting last week that we finished the commercial package for US-27. And we sent it on to the staff. And they will be submitting it and be putting it on the agenda, hopefully, next month sometime, before everything gets crazy with budget hearings and everything. And that, it's taken us over two years to get to here. And that I was informed yesterday that at the meeting of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association, the individuals that own the property at Flamingo and Sheridan made another presentation to them at their meeting. So that ugly little snake is raising its head again. And I would like for the council to keep aware of these sort of things that are taking place. So you'll be getting your package shortly, hopefully. And then you can read it. And when it comes to the vote on that, the Conferency Plan would like the town's authority to take a look at the ordinances, the zoning ordinances that implement this, to make sure that they're in line with what you pass and what we submitted to you. Thank you.
Any other board member comments? Seeing none, board comments, reports are closed. Item number four. Item number five, council member comments.
Really don't have much time.
Freddie? Any comments? Doug? Steve?
Wow, I do. Sorry, I'd like to make it the perfect, but... A few things that I wanted to touch on, really nothing, nothing big. One was probably the biggest thing, really, as you may not know, or certainly we know, we can't really talk among ourselves.
Except here.
Except here. So I kind of wanted to report back to you all, but you all are welcome to listen in. The, on the TIS Door, I think you've all probably seen from a budget standpoint, the dollars that are involved in TIS Door higher than what we would like. So a while back, I made the comment that I think we should cap that at five-hundred thousand. And I believe that's what we need to stick to. So just as, you know, you go through that budget process, I just wanted you to be aware that I'm aware and that that would...
Are we going to lengthen it?
Yeah, I think we're going to need to lengthen it over a longer period of time. But in fairness to the residents of our town, it just doesn't make sense to kind of have that be open-ended. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So...
Can be problematic.
So TIS Door, excellent. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob. I made the assumption, and I appreciate you pointing that out. So TIS Door is our annual program that we have been working on, just getting started in the last couple of years. To, we've been a town for sixteen years, and we were, did very little paving in town over all those years. There was always higher priorities. And so we put this program in place so that over an extended period of time, we would be able to repave all the roads in town and continue that process, so that... So it's a long-term project, a twenty-plus-year project, working with the Drainage Committee and the support of the council. And so we're working on that. And as, so this is a situation where the cost from year to year goes up and goes down. And this coming year, the cost was more than what we had originally thought it would be. And so what I'm talking about, just let's cap it, and we'll spread that out over a longer period of time in fairness to the residents of the town. So...
Steve?
Yes.
Can I jump in? I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
This is our only forum.
Absolutely.
We can communicate with that. On the TIS Door, have you given any thought as to how you would start and stop it? Let me give you, preface that a little bit. We've got it street by street and neighborhood by neighborhood. But would we, since we would be putting a dollar cap on it, would we be cutting off, like, a quarter of the project, a half of the project, and then resume it again when it's convenient?
Yeah, I understand your question.
Like, let's say, and I'm only going, I'm going to pick my street, just to play it safe, Mather Boulevard. Would we stop halfway at Mather and then continue at some feasible stopping point? Or would we just say, okay, that's it. We only go three-quarters of the way in, and we're done. And then we pick it up on the next corner.
Right. So...
Food for thoughts, all of us.
Yeah, no, it's a great point. It's a great point, because there are going to be some roads, and Mather's is probably a great example of it, where they're long enough, and I don't think we want to stop halfway or three-quarters of the way through. You know, so we may, you know, depending on how that works, we may just be doing the main road and none of the feeder roads that original time. Or in a worst-case scenario, let's say that that money couldn't do the whole road. I think the idea with TIS Door all along was that there was a fund of two-hundred thousand dollars that's available to us to maybe overspend one year and then pay back the next year, as we've started to do already. So if we were within a hundred thousand dollars of completing that, I would, I personally would say, you know, raise the five-hundred thousand, take a hundred out of that, and then the next year's program would be a little bit smaller, so that we could repay that hundred thousand. So it's one of the things that, as far as the Drainage Committee, I'm really going to be looking to work with them to really take a fresh look at it. Rod has done a great job of getting some newer, I think, more accurate numbers. And, you know, I know that the Drainage Committee put in a lot of time and effort in spelling out this whole, it was a twenty-one-year plan. But I think that honestly, we need to go back, through no fault of anybody's, but we need to go back and do it again with the new numbers and with the issues like what you're talking about in mind, and see how's the best way to spell this out, so that we're not going through this year after year. We get it, we get it nailed down, and we can proceed with it.
Any other comments?
I like that idea. You know, it might be the other way around, too, where you don't spend the five-hundred. If it, you know, might be a point where you complete your road and you have leftovers, so, you know, carry over those funds for next year. Listen, the great thing about it, Steve, is that we now have a mechanism to get these streets and drainage issues taken care of. We appreciate that and this council for coming forward and supporting it and passing it. And the fact we're having this conversation is acknowledgement. They've done a heck of a job.
Great, thank you. I wanted to, Andy, I wanted to congratulate you. I see that the mic holder is working. So I appreciate that. For years, we've been talking about that, so I appreciate that that's there. It's not falling down anymore. As far as the property at Flamingo and Sheridan, Newell's outside, but...
He can hear you.
Yeah, actually, for those that are interested in learning more about that, if I understood the meeting last night, those folks will be coming back next month. They were not here this week, but they were here a month ago. But for those who are interested, and especially the residents that are right close by, I know that Sunshine Ranches would love for those folks to be out there, to be able to provide input and their thoughts and their concerns and just hear the presentation about what's going on out there. So I'm glad that came up, and I think that's important.
Actually, I'm going to jump in with you on that a little bit. I missed it last night, because I was over at Costco getting tires on my truck, so I apologize. But some of the Sunshine Ranches residents don't know why the rest of town has any input.
Doug, that's exactly why I'm encouraging those folks that are close by there to come out. Because, you know, as I said to a number of residents that were here last night, I said, "To me, the most important votes are those people that are going to be impacted directly." Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on was, just in the future, Andy, if you can maybe communicate with CAP about the cars that are out there, I don't, I'm a little uncomfortable. They're taking up a lot of the prime parking spots for our residents to come to these meetings. I think on our nights that we have council, they need to move those cars someplace else. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I don't have any comments either. That might be unprecedented, four out of five. That's unusual. So that concludes council member comments. Item number six, legal comments, Keith?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll be brief, even though I do have my voice back tonight.
Good to have it back.
Which is nice. In the last two weeks since the last meeting, the mayor and I attended the deposition of Frank Ordus, the mayor of Pembroke Pines, to learn more about their position as it relates to the town's litigation against Pembroke Pines relating to their breach of the two agreements with the town pertaining to the development of the site out west. The Pines' position as it relates to their commissioners is pretty clear now. When the agreement said that the city shall not interfere with the development of that site, the commissioners are claiming that they're not the city, they're just commissioners, and the agreement says "city", and they're not the city. And I think, Mayor, I'm pretty much hitting it on the head as to what their position is.
Right, right on a minute.
Right. So we'll see how this plays out in the next couple of months. We do have the deposition of Frank Ordus in the next eight...
Castillo.
Castillo, excuse me. Castillo in the next eight days, and that will be done. And that's an update on that case. As far as the other case relating to the gate on 207th is concerned, we have reason to believe through our contacts that Pines is now attempting to vacate all of the roads within Laguna Isles. Am I saying that correctly? That's the community there.
Trails.
Trails, excuse me, the trails. And that they would put a gate up in the trails and remove their other gate and get off the Trails' property and make that a private community. That is a recent attempt by virtue of what the court basically told them at the last meeting. So that is the current legal update on the two, on those two cases.
And additionally, Keith, this legislative privilege, and I don't know how many times they invoked that, many times, and we just scratched our head, and essentially, their counsel, Bruce Johnson, instructed them not to answer many questions. So a lot of those still need to be reconciled as well. So I suspect that sometime in the near future, Keith, if I'm wrong, tell me that we're going to have to go back to court and compel him to answer some of those questions that are germane and important to our case.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, to sum that up very quickly, a legislative privilege is, you cannot ask a commissioner or mayor or elected official why they voted the way that they did on a particular item. You know, the way they voted, that's up to them, and they're immune from having to disclose what was going through their head when they voted the way that they did. However, when we ask questions like, "What did you think of the CCA property?" And they said, "Objection, legislative privilege", you know, it made zero sense, because they never voted on, you know, their thoughts dealing with the, you know, with the prison. So, you know, it, the deposition was filled with many objections that will have to be determined by a quarter later date.
And when Keith and I had our deposition, taking, I don't know, how many twenty-something hours, I can tell you not one time did we invoke legislative privilege. We answered all questions that they wanted to have answered. So I'll put things into perspective for you.
Anything new on Franklin Academy out west going in, out there on 207?
Well, it's under construction, I think.
Well, that I know.
I'll give you...
The road, the road opening, is it one-way, is it two-way?
With regards to the opening, the road, I'm not sure. Maybe that's something that Keith can answer. I will tell you that I know a few teachers that have been hired by Franklin, and they're expected to start in August. So I am relatively certain, within ninety-nine point nine percent, that they will be opening up, what is it, third week in August? So be prepared what that brings. You know, twenty-six hundred kids and all the support...
And two shifts.
Staff and facilities. I don't know about what the, what the schedule is, Doug. I'm not sure. When you say two shifts, you're talking about morning and the afternoon. You're right, because they have to, you know, they come there, they bus them. Obviously, staff arrives, and then you have just the opposite in the afternoon when they get out of school. So it's going to be a cluster out there. I don't think there's any question about that. And we predicted this, we knew this. That was one of the reasons why we did what we did. But here we are, and...
So are we going to be going after the county to help us here as soon as we realize it's drastic, or Tallahassee?
Well, you know, as it relates to Griffin Road, we previously put the county on notice that their approval of the school would destroy Griffin Road. They chose not to listen. In fact, they totally disagreed with us. So it is a county issue, it's a county roadway, and they're going to have to make a decision at some time.
Going to get bad fast.
Get bad fast. You're absolutely right. We'll see. It's right around the corner. Newell, you won't be counting motorcycles and cars, I'll tell you that. Okay, that concludes item number six, legal comments. Item number seven, Andy, administration comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things tonight. Last week's, or last, two weeks ago, the last council meeting, there was a lot of discussion about a portion of the C-11 canal out near 207 that, certainly from the roadway and standing over it, appears to be part of the canal bank eroding. And so Rod was in touch with South Florida Water Management District. They've been out, they've taken a look at it, they've sent pictures to us. The good news that I have to report to you is, there is no erosion. There's actually a head wall there that's recessed back a little bit further than the rest of the canal bank. So there is no erosion, we don't have a problem. What we do have, and there is a concern I have that I'll share with you tonight, is because of that pinching in on the north side of the guardrail, along where the guardrail is, it's created a situation where there really is not safe passage for a horse and rider on that side of the guardrail. So that's something we're going to have to take a look at and talk to the county about, try to create some sort of a passage. Because if you're on the other side of the guardrail, you get to that point, now you're trapped, you've got no choice but to turn around and go back. So we do need to address that. The good news is, the guardrail's there from a public safety standpoint and protecting the public. We're happy to have that there. But there is a little problem there that was perhaps unforeseen that's going to need to be addressed. So I just want to make you aware, we'll stay on top of that. The other item was, I just wanted to give you an update on the SRTAX, the ever-changing, evolving, every day. This originally started with the county talking a couple of years ago about imposing a transportation SRTAX. And that went from some of the county commissioners to the Broward County MPO, and Councilmember Fisk Kelly has been part of many of the discussions there on this as well. And there was a lot of negotiation between the cities and the county on how that split would go. And while there were terms that were agreed at, it's kind of fallen off the rails since then. And just to back up for a moment, at this point in time, twenty-five of thirty-one municipalities in Broward County have passed, and this council has not, but twenty-five of thirty-one have passed a resolution in favor of the infrastructure SRTAX. So the infrastructure portion of that, to be greater benefit to the municipalities, took on a life of its own within the MPO. And that group created language that would benefit the municipalities. Passed that and sent that off last Friday, I believe, sent it off to the supervisor of elections, because under the statute, the attorneys who advised some of those cities involved believe that the municipalities, having done it in this manner, passing a uniform resolution, have the authority to place that item on the ballot for November. The county has what some consider to be an administrative or ministerial role in placing that on the agenda. The county has completely and totally disagreed with the municipalities on this. They have taken the infrastructure SRTAX, completely revised and reworked the language to something that is not recognizable from what actually had been passed by the municipalities. And the county has put that as the infrastructure item on the ballot for November. So we participated in a phone conversation. We had a phone conference yesterday with city managers on the issue. Right now, they're following up with Dr. Snipes, the supervisor of elections, to see which of the submittals that she believes under statute is correct, if the cities are correct in what they've put forward, or if she'll follow the county. We don't know the answer to that at this point. The infrastructure SRTAX, as put forward by the county, is not favorable to the municipalities at all. Now, separate from that, the county has also advanced a transportation SRTAX, which was originally going to be another penny, that's been cut back to three-quarters of a cent, point seven-five. That is going on the ballot, that's to expand bus service and some other things. And they've talked again about synchronizing traffic lights and some other things. That one, for sure, will be on the ballot. At this point in time, I would expect that there, appears there will be two separate referendum on the ballot, one for a one-cent sales tax on infrastructure and one for a point seven-five cents on transportation. Which language in the infrastructure is to be determined? And in the county's change in their, in what they've done with the transportation SRTAX, they had originally negotiated a percentage split with the cities, that's been revoked. That money will all go one-hundred percent to the county. So it's, I'll say, some of the infighting So, it's, I'll say, some of the infighting and some of the politics between the municipalities and the county continues, and I'll keep you posted as that plays out. That's all I have, Mayor. Unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that update. All right, that concludes item number seven, administration comments. Item number eight, ordinance on the second reading for the record, Russell?
An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, creating Chapter 27 of the Town's Code of Ordinances entitled "Public nuisances that drain municipal services," providing for inclusion in the Town's Code, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Keith?
Mayor, I was looking for the residents who spoke on this ordinance last time. I don't- I know some of them wanted to come, but I don't know if they're here yet. But this was the ordinance that we are suggesting to deal with nuisance as to police fire and EMS calls, where residents are continually utilizing our services, abusing the services, and- which is taking those services away from real emergencies and real situations. So, this enables the town to be able to have some enforcement power over property owners who are not utilizing the services for which they have been intended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item?
Noel.
Noel Hollingsworth. I had one question, that say, an individual has multiple heart attacks over, say, four or five months, you know, and they get six, seven calls to go out there for a heart attack or another serious medical emergency as a resident. How are we going to differentiate between the two? And I would like to know, and does this ordinance address that?
It would not be a public nuisance. That's a medical issue, medical emergency.
Well, I'm sure that a lot of these are medical emergencies also at these places, you know, busted-up face and that sort of stuff. And so, you know, what's the difference?
Busted-up face and as a result of a conflict out there on that property, you know, specifically fights or whatever that happens on a consistent basis, would certainly, I would think, be classified as a public nuisance. Somebody with a medical condition, you know, is entirely-
I'd just like to see when the, you know, someone's tracking these, that this address of a person that is having a medical emergency situation is not classified erroneously as one of these nuisances for having these medical emergencies. That's all I'm curious about.
I appreciate that, Noel.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item?
I have ten must-.
Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion in a second to approve. Any additional question, comments, or concerns? Steve?
Yeah, I'll just add that I think the majority of the calls that are out there actually are not even medical at all. The majority of them, because we all get the reports and read them over every week, the majority of them are the- an individual from that household leaves, runs away. And it's the obligation of that house to report it. So, the officers come out there and they report it. An hour later, the individual comes back. Well, they have to report it again. So, an hour later, police come back again and report that they've returned. And so, it's this constantly calling them out for really no good reason. That's why it's a nuisance, is because there's really no benefit to the community in that. It's just somebody that leaves without authorization, and then they return. And- but it takes two calls to the police to resolve that matter. And it goes on and on and on. It goes on and on and on, day after day.
Both.
Both, so they're state and federal regulated. This just gives us a tool to deal with it at a local level.
I can tell you, this is not just, you know, focused on that. But I want to direct the council's attention and Mr. Hollingsworth's attention to Section 27-1 of the ordinance, which is on page, it's on the first page of the ordinance. And that actually defines what a public nuisance is. He gave an example of three heart attacks. It says, "It is declared unlawful and a public nuisance for any owner of property in this town to maintain such property or to permit such property to be maintained in such a manner that the property threatens or endangers the public health, safety, and welfare, adversely affects or impairs the economic welfare of the surrounding properties." To me, as a council, the three-heart-attack situation would not even remotely fit the definition of this ordinance.
Thanks, Keith. Any other additional question, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second to approve. Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number nine, resolution, for the record, please, Russell.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing a purchase order in the amount of $20,490 to Bennett Fire Products Company, Inc., to purchase 10 sets of personal protective equipment or bunker gear to replace expired or expiring bunker gear, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, first, to begin with, for the record, Bennett Fire Products Company, Inc., is no relation in any way, shape, or form to Fire Chief Lee Bennett. This is a regularly scheduled procurement, this is a budgeted item, and your finances worked hard on this to get us the best price, and they've done a very good job. We ask you to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, council, we have a motion in a second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Russell, call a question, please.
Yes.
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 Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 10, for the record, please, Russell.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget for entranceway signage and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, this is an item that's been back and forth in a couple of different variations. And where we are now is George Morris, who's the contractor on this, has three completed signs as we work towards the overall 10 that the Rural Public Arts Board has recommended. The three that he has, two of those are funded in the current year's budget. What we're asking you to do is allow us to take $8,500 to get the third one that George has completed this year and get that done, and then the balance will carry over to the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Andy. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199,000. I really don't mind putting the signs up and paying for it, but I wish it had been done in a more logical, budgetary way. And having said that, putting up the signs is a good idea. But where they're being put up is my real problem. And I'm going to use the one that's at 205. That is 1.2 miles inside our town limits. If we use that logic, we put all the signs on a little cluster in the center, and that would be it. You know, you'd have "Welcome to Southwest Ranches," and on the backside, we could say, "Welcome to Southwest Ranches." And we could save money that way. And put it on Dyke's Road. And put it in the middle. So, you put "Welcome" on both sides, and you're done. And we only spend one for one sign. Where the signs need to be are at the municipal limits. At Bonaventure Boulevard, on the north side of the canal. At US 27, at the C-11 canal, on the north side. At Sterling Road, on US 27, on the south side of the road. That's where the signs need to be. The closest point from this sign at 205 is 1.2 miles to our city's limits. This is ridiculous. They should be put as close as they can be. Not where someone thinks they'll look pretty there, and they have never been out that far west. So, I'd like this council to give direction to the administration to put them at our municipal limits. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Any other additional public comment? Seeing no- no public- no more public comment, excuse me. Public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion in a second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 11, resolution, for the record, please, Russell.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the First Amendment to the Agreement between the town of Southwest Ranches and the town of Davie for delivery of emergency medical fire protection and fire prevention services to amend the contract to allow for additional time for the parties to discuss an additional contract term, directing the appropriate town officials to execute the first modification to the agreement and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Again, we have a motion in a second to approve. Just for the record, Andy, I know that negotiations are ongoing, and I get the impression that they're going fairly well. And just give the council an update.
Yeah, but Mayor, town staff has reviewed the fire contract. We've had input from Chief Bennett and the Fire Advisory Board as well. Keith has completed his review of our negotiating position. But because of the possible needs in ramping up, this contract, which does not expire until September 30th of 2017, actually calls for us to begin negotiating much earlier. Again, to allow for changes and things that need to be planned in the long term. And our deadline is rapidly approaching, our communication with Davie is outstanding, we have no issues. All we're asking to do is just extend our deadline on our negotiations to August 1st, so that we can bring them to a satisfactory conclusion and bring that to you.
Great idea, Andy. Thank you. Again, we have a motion in a second to approve. After Andy's dissertation, any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none, Russell, please call a question.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.